All right. Good evening, everyone. I think we're still waiting for folks to log on. Hello, hello. Just a shout out to all of the attendees. Can you hear us talking in the in the panelist room?
Yep.
Great, great. And yes, the recording will be sent afterwards. For folks who for folks who need Spanish translation, we do have Spanish interpretation available. So you will go to the bottom of your screen and click the button for Spanish interpretation. You can also post in the chat if you have questions about that and our lovely interpreters can help you out. As we get started, I want to go around and give a moment to our amazing Bronx Council members who have helped coordinate and brought us all together this evening. All right. And so I think we'll go in order. Deputy Speaker Ayala.
Hi, I'm Stephanie here from Councilmember Ayala's office. I hope everybody learned something today about the training.
Great. And do we have someone here from Councilmember Dinowitz's office?
Good evening, everyone. Mike Horbit, Legislative Director, Councilmember Dinowitz. I also handle the budget here and happy to be here to present this with everybody. And please feel free to reach out to our office if you're in District 11.
Amazing. And I see our Councilmember Riley right over there.
Hey, good evening, everyone. This is Councilmember Riley, and this is a wonderful opportunity for us to educate our community on the discretionary funding process. This process is how we help fund many programs within our district. Many programs that we see working in our district, community-based organizations. And we want to give the opportunity to other nonprofits within the community to apply for discretionary funding. So thank you to the New York City Council. Thank you to co-chairs, Althea Stevens and co-chair Eric Dinowitz for putting this together and looking forward to this conversation. Thank you.
I think we are still waiting for some of our other lovely council members to log on, but going in order, we have Councilmember Stevens.
Hello, everybody. Good afternoon. I'm so excited to be here. Being a person who was on the nonprofit side for a number of years, understanding how important discretionary funding is and making sure that we're making it available and accessible to everyone is the first step. And the next step is, you know, once you are funded, how are you going to use this to continue to be funded? So I'm really excited to be a part of this process and making sure we're getting information out to people. If folks have questions and follow up, always feel free to follow, to reach us at our District 16 office. We're always here to help and support, even if you have questions. So thank you, everyone, for joining us. Thank you, city council staff, for putting this on and making sure people are getting information. And we look forward to continuing to build and make the Bronx great.
Okay. What do we have next? I see Marjorie Velazquez, Councilmember Velazquez has just joined us.
Hi, everyone. Councilmember Velazquez over here. And thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Stevens and Dinowitz for organizing this. This is a vital measure for our communities to get involved and get adequately funded. We've been facing so much underfunding in our communities, and this is our first step. So thank you all for coming. And please, please follow up with our office. And we're excited to see you all here. Thank you.
And Councilmember Farias.
Hello, hello, everyone. Councilmember Amanda Farias here from District 18. Really excited as also another former nonprofit person that managed budgets and dealt with the entire process. Bringing that here and to our local organizations in the Bronx and primarily in Council District 18 to get prepared and to really understand this entire process. What better way to bring money back into our districts than by bringing this resource to our community and in our backyard? So super excited for everyone to be learning and getting all the access of resources that they possibly can during this discretionary budget application process and really happy to help serve or answer any questions from my office for those that have them. So feel free to reach out. And thank you and big shout out to our delegation chairs for putting this together and New York City Council staff for making sure that our organization serving our neighbors are having all the resources available to them.
Amazing. And Councilmember Sanchez has just joined us as well.
Hello, everyone. Hi to my colleagues on the Bronx delegation. Thank you to our co-chairs, Althea Stevens and Eric Dinowitz for helping to organize this. We're so excited. I'm so excited to see 172, 73, the number keeps going up on this call. You know, we are, we are here to to learn about you and support you in the ways that we can. So please ask all the questions to the council finance team who are the experts for this process. So just in Spanish. Quiero decirle que cualquier persona que esté en esta llamada que necesite necesite traducción al español. Denle al botón que dice interpretación al fondo de su aplicación de Zoom. Okay, ahí lo pueden ver en español, lo pueden escuchar en español. Es muy importante para nosotros que todos tengan la información a igualdad, no importa el idioma. Y bueno, quiero agradecerle al tía Stevens y al concejal Eric Dinowitz por organizar esto y para que ustedes vean que en el Bronx estamos en unión y queremos trabajar con ustedes y apoyarlos. Así que gracias por venir y gracias al Consejo Municipal por estar aquí con este entrenamiento.
Amazing. Well, huge thank you to all of our council members who have brought all of our organizations here together to get this information. And a huge thank you to our finance division over at City Council for so graciously hosting this and providing all of the necessary information to organizations and making it accessible for the Bronx. I will hand it over to Macece and James.
Me, you want to go first or you want me to go first?
Um, whatever you, I say, maybe you go first. And the reason why I say that is most of the questions and everything will be related to my section. At least it'd be fresh towards the end of the chain.
Absolutely. Okay, so my name is Macece Sarkisian. I am one part of the discretionary team here at the New York City Council, and I primarily interact with capital funding. So most, I know most of the people on this call are representing community-based nonprofits. So what we refer to as the non-city process here at the council is how CBOs receive capital funding from the city. If you were here representing PTA or organization or school or some sort of city entity, for some reason, most of this process will not apply to you. The process for essentially a school to get funding is far simpler. Just reach out to your members' office and they'll be able to help you with that. But I'm just going to go through how CBOs work with us to receive capital funding. So we're just going to go over some key dates, how to determine if your CBO is eligible, how to determine if your product is eligible, and both are separate. The the common types of capital projects as well as requirements for each of those projects. So key dates, the application went live in late December. If you go to the CapGrants portal, Google CapGrants New York City, you'll be able to download the application documents right on the website. The deadline for applying for funding from both the Borough President's and the New York City Council is February 24th. So it's very fast approaching. If you are interested in meeting this deadline and you have not started application, we recommend you do so right away. The application is quite intensive. And the application deadline for New York City Council is over a month away, March 24th. So you still have plenty of time for that. Okay, so eligibility. So these are, we're going to go over some of the criteria for eligibility. The list of eligibility criteria is far longer. But we usually want to go over the top line items. You're going to receive a document after the training that has a two pager that we've created for CBOs to look at and kind of determine if this application is for them. That is far more detailed and you'll, you'll see some more nuances in that document. We just don't want to go over the line by line, but refer to that as your guideline. So everyone who applies for capital funding must be a registered nonprofit doing business in the state of New York, especially and specifically New York City. That applies to everyone here. But you also must have three years of audited financials. If you're a 501(c)(3), chances are you already have this. Some nonprofits with different designation will not file annual audited financials because you're exempt. But you still must have them if you're interested in receiving capital funding from the city. You must have current full-time paid staff, and you have to demonstrate the capability to regularly and continually use a capital asset for which funding is requested. So what this means is if you have a staff of one, you can't ask for two ambulances. You can't ask for more in capital assets than your organization has the capability to use. That's really what this comes down to. The last part here is you must provide the city with a lien on the capital assets for its useful life. So in the example of the ambulance, it's far easier. The ambulance technically belongs to the city for five years. During those five years, if you stop using it, the city will take that asset back. It's a little more complicated on property. Essentially, there's a lien against your property for the useful life of improvement, so usually 10 to 15 years. This is usually a hiccup if you have some sort of lien on the property already. So for example, if you have a bank loan against the property, the bank must allow the city to take a first position lien on the property before you can apply for capital funding. This is sometimes an issue for CBO. Some banks work with groups to do this because at the end of the day, the property you're paying off will will be more valuable. So most banks will do this, but you should start that process as soon as possible because that can take some time. So if your group is eligible, then we have to determine the project's eligible. So that these capital funds must be for physical assets that have multi-year lifespans. For all projects, it's at least five years. For some IT projects, it can be three years. It must be used primarily to deliver frontline services. You, so you can't use capital funding to primarily fix back office spaces, executive spaces, administrative spaces. As important as those are to CBOs, it must be an improvement to deliver frontline services. Additionally, where applicable, all projects must meet green building requirements. This is just part of city law. Any funding we give has to meet certain green building requirements. So what are the most common types of capital projects? The first bucket is movable property. So this is any vehicle, standalone equipment, and systems that are movable, such as minimally or non-attached items. So what we're talking about here is large pieces of equipment your CBO may use. So this could be certain tech projects, for example. If you're in a new space that was recently purchased, recently renovated, or recently leased, you could also apply for initial outfitting costs. So this is, you could essentially build out chairs, desks, do minor renovations, just to really start using a new space. That's also eligible for movable property. And each of these have their separate application. Once you download the whole application file, you'll see one application for vehicles, one for standalone equipment, and then one for this initial outfitting. And then there's also real estate property. So you, this either counts as building, construction, or renovation, and then real property purchase as well. And these also have their own separate applications. So if I want to go into these a little more, so movable property, the group must have at least one year contracts with the city, with the city, and they must total at least $25,000 a year. So when I say with the city, we mean for a president, we mean city council, we mean the city as a whole for either RFPs or certain contracts with city agencies. All contracts with the city qualify towards $25,000 threshold. The project cost must be at least $50,250 if the property, if the movable property is minimally attached to a building. And for movable property projects, the city can fund 100% of the project cost. So if the project costs $50,000 for, let's say, an ambulance, we could pay for the whole cost of that project. The second type is real property. And for these, you must have $50,000 contracts with the city every year for at least three consecutive years. This is, this one and all the other requirements we're mentioning here are hard requirements. It's not a situation of, oh, yeah, 45 one year, and then we can make a count. These are hard minimums that are established. Real property also has a few more requirements that movable property does not. The project must be at least $500,000 in cost, and it has to include 15% in contingency costs. The city could only fund 90% of the first $2 million in costs every year and 50,000, 50% of costs above that threshold. And the property must be owned by the applicant unless you are leasing it from an affiliate CBO that is subsidiary in some way, or if the project is a cultural institution or a senior center. Those have separate requirements. If you're a cultural organization on this call and you have questions, you should reach out to DCLA. They'll work with you hand in hand to figure out if your project is eligible. And senior centers just have an exemption for the real property, but you'll apply for the same system. So we usually pause for questions here, but we're going to turn it to Jimmy. I just want to say you're going to receive both this presentation after the call, and you're also going to receive the two pager we mentioned on eligibility requirements for capital. That goes into far greater detail. And there's also a link to, if you do link to the CapGrants website on that. If you have any further questions, you can always reach out to any of the, any of the staff on this call. They'll reach out to me if they don't know the answer. We're always reachable. And you can also reach out to discretionary email, which we'll put in the chat, and that'll go to me and Jimmy with any questions you have.
All right. Thank you, Macece. Do we have any capital questions right now, or are we going to save all questions for the end?
We could do it either way.
I would, if anything, if anyone has questions related specifically to capital, if you would like to discuss those quickly now before we move forward to expense. Now, before we start asking or answering questions, just to clarify, for those of you of you who may be new to this process, capital is specifically funding, a large sums of funding that is designated for large purchases or renovations. Expense funding, which we are going to discuss right now, is specifically smaller dollar amount, you know, minimum funding is 5,000 for expense funding. And that's specifically for programs and services, and that's typically designated as a smaller nonprofit organizations. So before we start getting to the questions, I just want to make sure that that is not your question if you are a small group looking for that type of information. We are going to discuss that now. If you have any questions related to specifically capital, what Macece just discussed, please raise your hand or unmute yourself if that's possible.
So I see a question from Andrea about the contract period. So it's three years, we had fiscal year. So the current fiscal year started June, July 1st, 2021, and it's going to end at the end of June 2022. So for that year, you would need 25, or for that year and the two prior fiscal years, you would need $50,000 in contracts annually. The lien requirement, so essentially, all capital funding is funded through bonds the city sells. So because of that, we essentially have to put up something of value against those bonds. So in this case, the way the city does that is a lien against the property. If for some reason your CBO were to stop operating and stop using the facility we improved, that asset would be seized by the city. So that's essential. This is lien just says you have to use this property for the lifespan of the lien. So 10 to 20 years usually. And during that time, it's just basically a season insurance that you were going to use the property to fund. That's all it is. It only really comes into an issue if you have a bank that already has a lien on the property. If you're purchasing property. So this is kind of, so someone has a question about what percentage of funds a nonprofit has to come to the table would match. So essentially, there, put the page back up. So here we mentioned. So here, so when we say 90% of the first 2 million, the remainder of that, for example, if you have a $2 million project, that lasts, what would be $200,000, the CBO would have to have some sort of funding using non-city entities to fund it. So by non-city, what it would be, we mean state, private funding, we mean resources that you have on hand.
So apparently, there are some hands raised that she's going to unmute.
Yeah, so I'm checking going through the chat. Already wanted to go to the raise hands first.
I have a few raised hands, and I'll, I'll unmute them in the order that they raised their hands real quick.
Great. We'll turn to the chat in a second.
All right. Sanghi Kim.
Hello. Hi.
Did you have a question regarding capital?
I'm so sorry. That was, I did not have a question.
Okay, no worries.
All right, great. The next is Sean Newport.
Hello. Sorry, I only have a question because I came late. Are we only covering the discretionary funding for capital at the moment? Is there?
We're doing capital first, just because it usually involves less CBOs. And then after this, Jimmy's going to take over and do an expensive presentation.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, so just going over a few questions. Someone asked again about the contract period. So yes, the contract for capital will start next year, but we just have to prove you have your providing services in the city this current fiscal year. That's all the capital requirement is. So if, if the building includes office space as well, so essentially, you could do the core and shell. So if you're renovating an entire building, it's okay for, for example, an executive or administrator to have the basic work done on the floor. OMB will determine what work is too specific to non-frontline services, but essentially core and shell of a building is always applicable. If the cost for a vehicle must at least be $50,000, this applies to any movable property. The city just can't do any capital funding that costs less than $50,000. It's a hard requirement for both city and non-city capital projects. So you essentially, yes, you have to buy a vehicle that costs $50,000 or more. Additionally, you have to buy specialty vehicles, which is usually almost always the case. So for example, when the city buys a single car, that's never capital eligible because they're not specialty items. So the $50,000 essentially covers all specialty items. The Bronx VP requires 500 per unit for capital funding. So the 500, the BP probably refers to real property improvements, which applies to us as well. The 35,000, I think might just be an old webpage. The minimum is 50,000. The BP is also cannot fund a project that is under $55,000 per capital.
We have another hand raised. Audrey Duncan.
Hi. My question is regarding the requirement that to apply for equipment, you have an operating contract with the city of New York?
Yes.
Minimum $25,000 for fiscal '22. So if we have an agreement with the Department of Education, they're paying for, to place students with us. That doesn't yet total 25,000. Is there still time for us to apply for other contracts with the city before the fiscal year ends in order to qualify and apply now?
So yes, but it would be very hard in these last four months to get new contracts registered and approved for the current fiscal year. Usually by this, it really depends. But as long as you reach 25 by the end of our budget period, it would have worked.
By the end of June?
Yeah, by the end of June. So yes, but if you don't already have some way to get to 25.
There may be, maybe like increasing some agreement that we have possibly.
Yeah, absolutely. It's the current agreement that makes more sense.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Travis had a question about collateral. So it's not so much collateral as the lien is just something the city has to worry about. If, as long as you have an asset already, it's going to be fine. So if you have land and you want to build on the land, that's going to be fine. It doesn't already have to be a physical building there. We have not had a CBO come to us purchasing such a government property yet, but I can't see a reason as to why that would not be eligible. It doesn't run afoul of any of the rules. We do do property purchases, not frequently, but often enough. I, there's no requirement that the property you're purchasing be from a private builder, or a private entity. So after training, you're going to receive the two pager I keep referencing about eligibility requirements. On there will be a link to CapGrants website, and that's where you could go to download the application documents as well as submit a form. If there's significant increase in the cost of a prior approved capital project, and you need more funding from the city, what you would have to do is you would have to apply again and show what those increased costs are and why. OMB is going to review the application, determine if the increased costs are appropriate, and then you can request additional funding still under the threshold of maximum we could give for your current capital project. That's, that's fine. That happens every once in a while. The eligibility requirements for capital, we went over a few of them. There are a lot, and they are different for each CBO. So we're going to send a two pager after the call, and you'll be able to reference them. So vans, sometimes you count the specialty vehicles. It really depends on the exact application, and only we will have to review it. So utterance, ambulance is what are some specialty vehicles? So, so in terms of cities, so fire trucks are a really common example. A lot of senior centers do apply for vehicles that are wheelchair accessible to transfer seniors to and from the senior centers. Those are eligible and permissible. We found those in the past quite frequently. Thank you, Jimmy, for answering that. So houses of worship have a few additional requirements if you're applying for capital funding, essentially, as if if the space you're improving with the capital funds is both used for religious reasons and nonprofit reasons. OMB does a determination of what portion of the time and space is occupied for non-pro, for public purposes essentially, and for religious reasons. So the portion of it that is for public will, it'll, a percentage will be determined, and that'll be applied to the capital eligible funds. So for example, you have a $2 million project, let's say it's eligible for $1.8 billion in funding. And half the time, the space is used for religious purposes, and the other half is used for food pantry. That 50% is applied to the 1.8, and you would be eligible for $900,000 as an example. So they are eligible, but there is that, it's a very arduous process. We're only going to ask you a lot of questions, and you got to show how you use that space for nonprofit reasons and for what time, but it is eligible. So capital funding can take long, but there is essentially a timeframe. So once we fund you in the budget, which is going to be done by the end of June, the agency will reach out to you in the fall to start paperwork. And then you'll begin the process. The timeframe for capital really does range. There are some groups that don't start projects for five years, but that's because they have something else they're working on. It's usually up to the CBO how quickly it starts. Some groups will purchase a property in under four years, under three years, but it really does depend on the CBO, the complexity of the project. And there are always a lot of moving parts for capital, so it's really hard to determine how long it'll take. But your funds do not disappear. If you've had funds that you funded very long time ago, five, six, seven years, I would just check in with the agency and make sure you spend those funds. If no one hears anything from you, the funds do expire, but it's not, you don't have to worry about them disappearing after two or three years. That does not happen. I think I got all ones in the chat, and I don't see any hands.
Perfect. All right, let's. All right. So part two of this training is to discuss the expense or the expense discretionary funding portion of city council funding. Now, this is much different than capital, like Macece just discussed. This is again small dollar amounts, and specifically, these funds are used for programs and services. Now, the document that I'm using right now for the presentation is what you will receive after this, it's a PDF version of it. Okay, so first and foremost, what is discretionary funding? Well, another nickname for discretionary funding is expense funding. And what that is, is basically funds designated by the city council, whether that be the council as a whole or a member or a delegation. And these funds are designated only to nonprofit organizations. Okay, one thing to note about this funding is that it is reimbursement-based program, which means that the organization should have some funds on hand in order to start the programming, if they were funded, in order to start the programming to then incur or get some receipts, to then submit those receipts to the agency for reimbursement. Now, there have been some programs that have begun because organizations have explained or expressed some difficulty with having the cash on hand. So I believe now what's going to happen moving forward in either FY '22 or definitely FY '23 is that the Mayor's Office of Contract Services will be releasing 25% of the award to the organization upfront once the organization has been cleared and the contract has been approved and initiated by the agency. So again, reimbursement-based, another big thing to know about this is unlike capital funding, if designated, if you receive the designation of expense funding, those funds must be used within the fiscal year that it was funded. We don't do multiple years, and we're not allowed to roll funds over if they're not used within that fiscal year. So that's something very important to know. Our fiscal year begins on July 1st and ends on June 30th. So for fiscal year '22, which is the current fiscal year. So for fiscal year twenty-two, which is the current fiscal year, it began on July first, twenty twenty-one, and will end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Next, who is eligible for this discretionary expense funding? Okay, so as I mentioned before, can only be designated to nonprofit community organizations. Uh, in order to receive that, what that means is uh, one, the organization must be registered with the IRS. And have their own legal name and employee employee identification number, E I N. Okay, uh, in addition to having that, they must also be registered with the New York State Attorney General's Charities Bureau. Okay, um, unless exempt, now those who are exempt are typically religious organizations. And even though you are exempt, you still must register with the charities bureau by submitting a one-page document that they have, which is an exemption form. Uh, and basically uh has a couple of different categories, which I don't have off the top of my head. But there's a couple of different categories that would fall into uh an organization being deemed um exempt from filing with the charities bureau. But even though you're exempt, again, I must say you have to still have to submit a one-page document to them. Okay, uh, under no circumstances can a for-profit entity apply or receive funding for the city council uh discretionary funding. Okay, if if the organization is not sure or you are not sure if an organization is for profit or not, just make sure they submit an application. And uh, at the point in time that your office makes a designation. Or council members' office designates funding to you, they will determine uh a legal review will be done. We'll discuss that a little later in this training. Uh, a vetting process will be done for all awards that are designated expense funding, and uh it will be determined at that point. How to apply for discretionary funding? So you can only apply one way uh for discretionary funding and that way is on the council's website, like is provided here. The application was released on January third and the deadline uh to submit the application is February twenty-second. Now, to avoid a whole bunch of questions because we get them in every training. Uh, the application will be taken down at eleven fifty-nine P M on February twenty-second. As soon as it hits midnight, which will change the day to February twenty-third, the application will no longer be available. Now, it is extremely difficult uh to have the application reopen. So if you have any interest in any form of expense uh discretionary funding, whether that be through a member of citywide initiative. A member designated initiative, a speaker award, whatever the case may be, you have to submit an application by February twenty-second. What we started uh last year, we're gonna continue for this year, is this option here on our website. So what it is, is we give you two options. If you are coming to complete the uh FY twenty-three application for the first time. You can select this. If you have begun an FY twenty-three application, because one thing to note about our application, you do not have to complete it in one sitting. You can uh begin it, uh, start or complete a section or two, save it, and then complete it at a later time and date. If you have begun an application or you want to see the applications you have already submitted for this fiscal year, you would use this option. Okay, and it'll bypass uh opening up a new application automatically. It'll take you to a. A menu that has a list of all the applications that are either in progress or submitted. Okay, so some different types of expense funding. Um, so one thing to note is that the council members uh do not have full discretion to designate all of the city councils funding. They do have specific parts that they are one hundred percent uh responsible for designated, but then there are parts here that they aren't, or they at least will have um. The ability to express support for a project. Okay, so I'll go through each one of these types of uh expense discretionary funding that an organization can possibly receive. So first and foremost is member discretionary funding. Uh, this funding is designated from these three uh funding sources that are very specific to each council district. Okay, and each council district receives uh these same four parts and are required to designate these four parts. Now, one thing to note for from an applicant's point of view, you do not have the ability to apply to these uh parts. They're not listed like uh the other initiatives that you may have or may have applied for in the past. Okay, these parts are one hundred percent designated by the council member. So if you have interest in receiving funding directly from a council member through one of these parts. How you would do that is you would submit an application and just select the council member's name, uh, none of the other initiatives. In the event you were to select uh all, that's fine. You would just have to explain to the council member. Uh, explain your application or ask to the council member when the time comes. Okay, another type of funding is speaker funding. Now, this funding is designated by the speaker, but to be honest, it's typically not just the speaker's big part of, you know, where they just do whatever they want. This this funding is typically designated at the request or uh or support of a council member, a delegation or caucus. One thing to note, uh, if you are applying to some of the caucuses, they uh they don't have their own set pot of money like the council members do. But they their funding is all designated via the speaker's list. So if you are interested in receiving funding through one of the caucuses, please reach out to them, meet with them, explain your ass, but you will need them as a caucus to champion your request. Member designated initiatives. Okay, so those uh every council member receives these and they all receive pretty much the same amount for the most part. Okay, and each one of these initiatives uh are designated with specific guidelines for the council members designated, whether it be a minimum uh designation amount. Or uh specific eligibility requirements for organizations. Okay, um, the council members have these guidelines. You typically don't uh share those guidelines to the public, but for the most part. Um, the purpose of funds for the initiative, if you feel that you fall into um. If if you feel that your organization, you know, meets or or falls into place with whatever the initiative is trying to do or target. Feel free to select it on your application and uh request the council member's support on it. Again, the council member may ask you for additional details on your proposed project, but again, please submit an application. And then you have citywide initiatives, uh initiatives that were created to address different needs across the city. These initiatives are typically designated by a specific committee or approved by the councils of all. Okay, so just a little background on this, the city council has over a hundred and forty uh citywide um initiatives that we funded in fiscal year twenty-two. Okay, if you are curious about any of these initiatives or what they are, how much they were, how much the initiative was funded for and things of that nature. You can go to our website and look at a document um titled Schedule C. We have a Schedule C listed for every fiscal year. Okay, so if you go and click on the budget section of our website, you'll see uh. The tab for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, first budget document listed will be Schedule C. And there's a complete list of every initiative we funded for the fiscal year, as well as a brief description. Uh, the amount, the contracting agency, uh, who is responsible for handling that initiative. As well as in the event we uh identified any recipients at adoption, they'll be listed there as well. Okay, and then lastly, you have the borough-wide initiative. Uh, this initiative, technically, every council member at the city council receives the same amount. But um each borough delegation receives a different amount, and why that is is depending on on the borough. Uh, and depending on the number of council members in that borough is what gives each, you know, borough delegation a different amount. But every council member receives the same amount in this. Um, this is basically a an extension of the member discretionary funding, except it has a more borough-wide focus. Uh, and that is up to the borough delegations discretion on how they designate that, whether they split it up evenly amongst its members or whether they designate that together as a whole. Okay. Moving forward, we will get to all your questions, so just uh wait until the end and then uh we'll try and get to each one of them. Uh, what is the vetting process? So as I mentioned earlier, uh, vetting process or another name for the vetting process is the legal review. Uh, this process is conducted by the general counsel's office here at the city council. Okay, so uh, finance division does not handle this. This is one done uh solely by the lawyers in the general counsel's office. So what this process consists of is, as I mentioned, when we discuss eligibility requirements in terms of. That the organization has uh an active E I N number and legal name with the IRS. Okay, what I mean by active is that they do a check with the IRS database and sometimes some organizations have uh either failed to submit on time. Or the IRS status has been revoked, whatever the case may be, that's what we are referring to uh in when we say active. So that's part one. Next is uh. They checked to see that all the required forms from the application were submitted and submitted correctly. Uh, now, every application that is submitted to the city council, every uh, you know, discussion application must be submitted with three required forms. Now, the first form is the authorization form, and this form must be notarized. Uh, the city council accepts uh e-signatures and e-notaries. So uh, if that's a concern of yours, feel free to use those. Uh, the next is the conflict of interest form. The conflict of interest form, that is another form that that just needs to be signed and dated. It does not need to be notarized. And then the next, the actual correct name for this form is the uh elected officials affiliation form. Okay, now that is another form that is required. This form is required for, these three forms are required for every application you submit. So one tip that I give organizations and the general council is okay with this, is that you have these forms completed one time. Meaning you get one authorization form notarized and another conflict of interest and affiliation form. And then as you submit it, in the event you plan on submitting more than one application, you can upload those three documents with each one of your uh applications you submit. And that should suffice. Next, um, is that an organization's status as a nonprofit? Okay, so that goes back to the charities bureau, making sure that they are in compliance with the charities bureau and or they submitted the exemption form. But another big uh part of that is when they were created. Okay, so the city council has set some uh funding caps or maxes on organizations that they consider new in some. You know, way, shape or form, and I'll explain the two categories of of what they considered new. So the first new category is considered newly created organizations. Okay, and this is, well, these are organizations that were created uh within the last two fiscal years. Now, what that really means is the date that they're using is for fiscal twenty-three. If the organization was created after July first, twenty twenty. After July first, twenty twenty, that means that they're under two years old, uh, then they will be, they will be held to a funding cap of twenty thousand. And out of that twenty thousand, no more than ten thousand can come from one member. So please keep that in mind, uh, if you are new newly created, you will be uh capped off with the fund. And the reason why that is, is that if you're new, uh, there's two things that we that are why we're capping these groups off. One, um, there's not a lot of financial or fiscal information out there on how you have handled contracts previously. And technically, you can request extensions from the IRS to file. So the general council doesn't feel comfortable, you know, giving large sums of funds to organizations that don't really have a big fiscal history yet. And then the second part of this is, as I mentioned, this is reimbursement based. So the general council doesn't want to um overwhelm a new organization as well by giving them a large sum of funds. And they will be responsible for heavy contracting of it. Okay, so that's one of the reasons why uh these newly created organizations. So I don't, I don't want you you to think that this this is set up to like, you know, hold the new group down. We're trying to prevent the new group from, you know, progressing. Uh, that is not the case here. This is more like training wheels and we just want to make sure that you handle the contract and you're comfortable. Once this happens, once, once you go through one year of funding, uh, and you do that successfully, then this funding cap will be removed. And then the next new uh category is considered new to the council. Now, what uh the general council deems uh organizations as being new to the council are organizations that. You know, they may be in existence for, you know, ten fifteen years, but they never really received city council funding before. Or if they have, they haven't received it within the past three fiscal years. Now, for organizations that fall into that category, um, they will be held to a funding cap of fifty thousand dollars. And no more than twenty-five thousand of that funding can come from a single member. Now, the reasoning behind that is um. The contracting process has changed dramatically in the past three fiscal years. Uh, with the introduction of HHS Accelerator and Passport and and all that. Uh, so with that being said, the general council also feels that with all the changes, they want to also put the trainings on these larger organizations. As well, and make sure that they know what they're getting into and can fully successfully handle or execute the contracts of that amount. And again, that's just a one-year deal. Uh, if that happens, you know, within the first year and then the group is successful with their contract. Then it would be funding cap will be rem- removed the following year. Okay, so we mentioned the New York Charities Bureau. Um, now, this is actually an annual filing. Uh, I don't believe for the exemptions. I think if you're exempt, once you submit the the one time, uh, and it's approved, then then you're good to go. Um, but for uh for all other organizations that are required to do this, it's it's actually an annual filing called a CHAR five hundred. When the review is done, they will take, the general council has uh, you know, they look in the charities bureau's database to make sure that your filings of the CHAR five hundred are up to date. Or that you have filed for an extension, if that is all up up to date, then that will be approved as well. Next, you have a review of an organization's past agency evaluations and relating to the contract, relating to contract performance. Okay, so this has gotten much better or uh. Has advanced dramatically within the past fiscal year. And what I mean by that is uh with the new introduction of the Mox Passport System, which we're going to discuss in the next slide. With that, the city council and the general council now have access to all contracts within um the passport system, which is all the city's contracts. And now the agencies starting this year are being required to report on every contract. So finance doesn't technically have the viewing rights, but the general council does. And what they can do is they can, when they do, they look up uh or do a search based on the organization and E I N. And look at all the contracts the organization currently has. Now, because the agencies are starting to report on this, if your organization is unresponsive or, you know, submitted uh things for reimbursement that may not have been up to par. That stuff is now being reported and relayed to our general counsel's office live. So please note, uh, if something um were to come up, please make sure you are responsive with your contracting agencies if you're currently being funded. Because any negative reporting will, you know, come back to you in a sense of they may, the general council may ask the council member or or you. Uh, about an update on some kind of report. So just please keep that in mind. Uh, stay active and responsive with your contracts on with the agencies. And then uh vice versa, if you are having some trouble with the contracting agency. Please notify your council member who funded you, and they will reach out to the finance division and we will get to the bottom of it and find out what's going on. Okay? Uh, next, confirm the description of the proposed program and or service meets the public purpose requirement. Again, um, depending on the programs and services, they have to be open to the public um and things of that nature. So depending on what you're applying to do, um, that will be, you know, reviewed as well. And then lastly, you have news articles, social media and the internet. For every organization that is actually designated funds by the city council be- um, before it's approved. The general council does basically a Google search on the internet, uh, as well as do uh, I guess like LexisNexis and whatnot. For news articles, um, basically, if anything negative comes up, they will inform the council member. And if it's uh something that's extremely negative, uh, the council member may be asked not to fund your organization, whether that be for good or for this current fiscal year. Until whatever issues are resolved, but please note that these things do come into play with uh any of your funding. Next, mayor's office of contract services. Okay, um, name for this is Mox. Uh, just one thing to note, we use a lot of acronyms, so at any point in time, um, use an acronym. Or you're unsure of what an acronym is, please reach out and let us know. We're trying to guide you in the right direction, but Mox. Uh, now they handle basically the vetting process or the legal review for. Uh now, they handle basically the vetting process or the legal review for uh on the mayor's side of things and basically for all the city contracts. So any organization that is one applying or expects to receive funding through discretionary expense funding must first and foremost be registered in the passport system. Okay, so um one thing that's not listed here, and for those of you organizations that are on here who may currently be receiving funding or received funding recently. Um one thing that's not on here and I don't wanna confuse people, it's not that it is, it is no longer a thing. Uh is the HHS Accelerator. That will still be required of all organizations. The difference for F Y twenty-three is that in F Y twenty-three, HHS Accelerator will now be part of the passport system. Okay, so I believe uh previously, HHS Accelerator was its own system, Passport is its own system. Uh but now moving forward, uh I believe HHS Accelerator will now be part of the passport system. Now, I briefly explain what the passport system is. So again, like I said, every organization that uh intends to receive funding from the city council must be registered with this. Okay, and how this or what this is, is starting in F Y twenty-one, the mayor's office um converted all of the city's contracting process uh into electronic, uh converted it into uh an electronic version or electronic database, which is now what we call the passport system. Uh it stands for Procurement and Sourcing Solutions Portal. And all city contracts flow now and are handled through this system. And uh why this is important or uh a lot of good things relating to this. And the only, there's only one con that I can say, and it's not even really a con, uh that is that at the initial registration, there's a lot of information that is asked of you uh for you to complete and fill out. Um but once that is all completed, then um it's it's good from there. What I mean by that is so in the past, um the mayor's office and the city council, how we fund our organizations is extremely different. The mayor's office does not have the luxury of, you know, picking groups on a discretionary basis like we're doing right now, basically saying here is a pot of money, these are the guidelines, go pick groups. They don't have that luxury. How they have to um pick groups is through what's called an R F P process. And that stands for Request for Proposal. Now, in the past, uh small organizations would complain uh that unless they had a high-profile lobbyist or they knew somebody in city government, they weren't uh made aware in a timely manner of when these R F Ps were released for whatever categories and sections or initiatives that they have, that they're trying to uh, you know, get some funding and programming done with. Okay, so what? Because we heard them and the mayor's office heard them, what they did was as part of the passport system. At any point in time, an organization uh an R F P is released by the administration, whether that be by directly by the uh city agency or whether that be by the mayor's office as a whole. At any point in R F P is released. And that R F P, you know, they usually have specific triggers and categories. So when you completed all this information at the beginning of your registration, you basically said that you provide youth program in this area, in this location, in this borough, whatever the case may be. All those questions and answers were being catalogued and basically set up into a criteria. So at any point in time, an R F P is released by the administration and your organization needs that criteria. You will be sent a notification that, hey, you need the qualification, eligibility, qualification, would you like to submit a request for proposal? Now, whether or not they do actually submit the request for proposal, that's something different. But it does take away from the whole factor of, you know, they didn't need to know somebody. You know, to get information on when this was released. They were informed the same day, same time that everyone else was uh informed. Okay, um so that's very important, especially for these small organizations that are just seeking different funding streams. Um which, again, would the big part of this and and what's extremely important, like council member Riley mentioned. The whole big thing here is we wanna educate you guys on all the different funding streams that are available to you, as well as educate you on the contracting process and as a whole, um just so that you're aware of what's out there and and how to, I guess, go after it. Okay, so passport, all contracts, all city contracts flow to passport. Um I see the council member, dinner which just arrived. Did you wanna say a few words real quick?
Sure, um first of all, I'm thrilled. Thank you, James. Um the presentation's going real well. I wanna say first, I'm thrilled so many of you have signed on to learn about the uh to learn about the discretionary budgeting process. Um I'm, I am sorry that I'm late. I was actually just at one of my local middle schools. Um seeing the debate league. I actually participated in one of the debates. And it was really an exciting experience for me. Um and I think, you know, the reason I bring that up is I think it's a good lesson for for anyone who's applying for funding. Um it is not, it is important not just to apply and not understand, not just understand how the application process works, but once the application goes through, ensuring that you try to get a meeting with the council member or their staff to make it known to them personally um that you did this application. And even better, if you cannot just tell the council member or your or or their staff the value of your organization, but if you can show them. And so I brought up the debate because they were able to show me the impact uh their program had on the lives of the students. Um and I thought that was, it was fun, but it was also very effective. So what, like I said, while you're learning about all of these details, I hope that you maintain that relationship and reach out directly to your local council member's office about your funding.
Thank you, Captain. And he's right, uh if at all, if you are currently receiving funding, that's great. Make sure you continue and open up a line of communication with the council member's office. Again, it's their funding at their discretion, so I promise you, uh they would love to hear an update on how the funding is going. And in the event you're having any issues, they need to know that too. Uh they, maybe there, there's something that they can do on their end to assist you, whether it be a little tweak or change to the designation. Or if you're struggling with the amount, they can help with that too, whatever the case may be. Uh you, but you all that would only be possible if you communicate with the council member's office. Okay, uh moving forward with the Mox uh vetting process and what goes into their clearance process. So in addition to HHS Accelerator, the passport is required for all. Capacity building training is only required for organizations that are receiving ten thousand or or more. Uh the link to that is here. Uh these trainings are all online and virtual, so you can take them uh uh at any point in time. I believe you can save and uh continue if you, if you don't complete it in one sitting as well. Uh big thing to note and one thing that I highly recommend and or suggest is although it states that the C B O is receiving ten thousand or more, do not allow this to handcuff you. I would suggest right now, uh I wouldn't say right now, but in general, uh you're gonna see when we go through a flow chart of the I guess contracting process, after you submit an application. And you know, by the time we adopt, which we won't adopt until June sometime. Uh you'll have some downtime in terms of this. Now, obviously, you provide programs and services daily or however. But uh in terms of the application process for fiscal twenty-three, you'll have some downtime on that end. So that's when I suggest that you get all these things squared away, such as the passport uh requirement and the capacity training. And the reason why the capacity training to me is so important is you see how we're going through this and we're kinda giving you a Cliff Note and a brief discussion of all these different options and guidelines. Um what the capacity building training is and why it was created is that um basically, it goes through a full detailed explanation and um basically uh shows you what you will be required to do uh when executing a city contract. Okay, so the reason why I say it's important or recommended is, one, um you'll learn so much from this and you'll know right out the gate if this is something you wanna get into or not. And like I said, it's it's a time-consuming process. Uh and it can be tedious with the exchange of documents with the agency. Uh but it has changed dramatically that process with the creation of passport. But I don't want this also to, uh I see it happen every year where organizations don't do this. Uh because they only intended to receive the five thousand dollars that they get from the council member annually. Uh but then what happens, uh after we adopt the budget, the member-designated initiatives are usually released to the council members. And then they find out, hey, you've been doing great with the five thousand that I gave you for the past three years. Now, I wanna give you a couple more dollars to an initiative. Now that, you know, the council member's goal or intentions are to help you. But once you receive more than the uh ten thousand dollars at any point in time, it puts all of your existing contracts on hold until you complete this requirement. So again, do this in advance. It doesn't hurt you, even though you're not required to, and it also won't handcuff your existing awards or contracts if you were to receive additional funding at a later date. So I highly recommend taking this training. And again, all that is located on the Mox website, and the link is here. Um that is completely separate. One thing I want to talk about before I move forward to um the flow chart is that if you are currently receiving funding from the city council for fiscal year twenty-two and uh have clearance issues, whether they be related to the, you know, city council's clearance here or the mayor's office of contract services. Our websites, meaning the city council's website and the mayor's office of contracts website. Uh both of our websites contain what's called discretionary search engines or databases. Uh Mox is called the discretionary tracker and we just have an expense funding search engine. Okay, on our website, we only list um if an organization is cleared or pending city council clearance. We do not list the details relating to why or if your organization is pending. Um if you, if you fall into that category, please reach out to the council member that funded you. Or you can reach out to discretionary at council dot N Y C dot gov for more details and we will relay that to you. Okay, we don't list um any of the details as to why an organization is uh pending council clearance because some of that information may be sensitive. Uh and we would rather discuss that, either have the council member discuss that directly with the organization or um have the organization reach out to us directly where we can explain that to them. Now, the mayor's office of contract services, they only have three or four possible clearance issues. And and I'll go through those quickly. It'll be HHS Accelerator registration, uh passport registration. Um capacity building training, uh pending council clearance. So they'll tell you on their website if it's something that's pending council clearance. They'll just say if it's pending council or not. Um or then the last possible option is, which is very rare, but we will see it here and there. As if an organization was uh designated funds to contract with D C L A. But they were not approved by D C L A through the C D F Fund, which is the Cultural Development Fund. Okay, so on Mox website, they'll list the details, but if you have uh pending council clearance issues, please reach out to us directly. Okay, um so this, this slide here uh is listed in numerical order. And what this is basically uh an explanation of this flow chart. My preference is to just go through the flow chart. Uh but one thing I do wanna know is this question here or explain this question here. When will, or we get this question all the time. And unfortunately, we cannot give you an answer because as I go through this flow, uh this flow chart. Um you'll see that there are a lot of checks and bounces. Uh and most of the time, the ball falls within the organization's court. And what I mean by that is clearance. If an organization is not cleared by the council or Mox, um before we adopt the budget, sometimes that dramatically uh increases or delays the contract altogether. And I'll explain all the reasons why. Okay, so this is where we are right now. We are at part one. This is where the application is available and organizations are submitting applications. Okay, so what will happen next after you submit your application between uh one and three? You know, it says two, I put this asterisk here, organization registered amount, because again, it's not required. But like I said, it's very much recommended that you make sure that your organization has all of its Mox um stuff in order before we actually adopt the budget. Yes, make sure you submit the application first because our application has a deadline and will come down from the website on February twenty-second. But after you submit an application, then next order of business should be uh getting yourself registered uh with passport and or taking the capacity training as well as the HHS Accelerator requirement. Okay, so I put this here because this is what I was mentioning before is after you submit the application. And before we adopt the budget, what's happening here is you may or may not be meeting with the members. If you did, it's gonna happen, you know, uh March, April, who knows? Um but since you're not doing too much with this, I would just recommend this getting done now. So now let's fast forward, uh the city council votes and approves on the budget. And we release that document that I mentioned earlier titled Schedule C. Um once we do that and or, so after we release Schedule C, one thing to note about Schedule C, that is just a snapshot at adoption. And what that means is that every month, we vote on what's called transparency resolutions and stated hearings. And a transparency resolution is basically the city council being transparent about any changes to the budget. So three, this, this um option three, not option, this part three uh basically is reset every time we have a transparency resolution. And that means uh when we make or create a new designation uh at any point in time or edit designations, that's when it'll be listed. Once that happens, whether it's a reso or budget adoption. We then take all that data and all those changes and we reflect them in what's called a master list. Okay, and that's a master list of all the city council's designations on like an Excel list. And that list is then shared um with Mox. Mox gets that list, uh and what they do is they take a look at that list. And uh one thing to note, in order to move forward with the contracting process. The organization must first be cleared by the city council, that means through that general council's vetting process. And then by the mayor's office of contract services. Okay, so once we send uh a whole list to the mayor's office of contract services, that list contains both organizations that are pending and cleared. They take a look at it, they kinda filter it out only by cleared groups. And then they say, out of the clear groups that the council has, which groups of these do we have cleared to? Now, the groups that are cleared by both the council and Mox will then be shared with the city agencies on what's called a cleared list. So an example of a delay is if we adopt a budget and the group is still pending and some groups technically are still pending clearance, you know, and within fiscal twenty-two. So you can only imagine how dramatically delayed their contracts will be if they're still pending clearance. But let's say in a perfect world, um they're cleared here, as soon as it's cleared uh by both. Uh the Mox will notify the agencies, the agencies will also, Mox will then update passport. But if they're not cleared, then what happens is we only exchange this information from, you know, three to four, once a month. And I wanna be very clear, and the reason why is we are doing a lot of changes and movements and we only, we can only make those changes once a month through a transparency resolution. So once we vote on it, we update the data, we send it to Mox. So if you missed this, this boat by being cleared on this transfer of data, then you have to wait a whole thirty days. Maybe even more, depending on the council's schedule of transparency resolutions to then be considered or have the opportunity to be listed as cleared and that information be sent to Mox. So again, extremely important to get this stuff settled and cleared up before you even receive a designation. Cause the name of the game is to be cleared right out the gate so that it can be immediately entered into passport. Now, once it gets entered into passport. Here's another possible holdup. And we're getting, we're starting to hear this a little more often due to confusion uh with organizations, especially confusion with organizations who have been doing this for a long time. And what I mean by that is uh with the new passport system. Everything is live and people can all see. There's a lot of accountability being had or made in here because uh now a lot of different sources, like you see the finance can see, general council can see, Mox can see, the agency can see where each contract is in the process and who is supposed to do what. Um so where groups are having a lot of confusion is in the past. Uh they were waiting for the city agency who was, you know, gonna be handling the contract, whether it be D Y C D or uh Department of Health or, you know, whatever the city contract agencies is. They're waiting for them to send them an email to notify them that they're ready for them to begin the contracting process. That was the process, that used to be the process, um but that is no longer the process. And now each agency, technically, the agencies are not required to do this, uh meaning send an email. Uh, meaning send an email out to notify you that you can begin the contracting process, they're not required to. So some are doing it still, some are not, uh, some are also only doing it if they haven't heard from an organization for a while. Uh, then they'll send out, you know, but again, we're getting a lot of emails on the finance end. That organizations are stating that they haven't heard from the agency, they're all cleared. Everything is being handled through passport. So if the, the organization technically is not going to send you an email, they're just gonna send you a ping or notification within passport. So it's extremely important for organizations to check up and and stay up to date with their passport. Their passport database and make sure that they're not being alerted or notified by the agency in there uh to submit their documents. So that's another big issue or task that's been happening, that's been slowing up the system is. Now everything is moving and there's a lot of accountability, but there's been a lot of confusion on when an organization should be submitting what. Uh, and to who, um, but there is no more to who. Everything will be submitted through the passport system, so we no longer have to worry about you sending something, sending someone an email. And them worrying about if they checked the email or got it. Uh, now everything is sent and if uh it is in there and the agency didn't do what they had to do. Um, that's big too, that's important, that's something that we need to know. So uh, if you're having issues where you have submitted all the documentation or you believe you have. Please shoot an email to discretionary at council dot NYC. Uh, and let us know the details such as the Mox I D number and all that stuff. And we can try and get to the bottom or seek an update from the agency. Uh, and in some cases, the agency will give us specifically what you need to do. Uh, in order to resolve that, and in some instances, they'll put you in contact with whoever your program manager is. Next, uh, after, after it's uh uploaded into passport. And the contracting agency and the group begin or initiate the contracting process. Uh, that's typically when the organization starts to submit their receipts and budget documents. Uh, to form a complete contracting package uh within the passport system again. Okay, so once that's done, the organize, the agency reviews it. Uh, now I'll be honest, the agency is kind of stickers and they have to be because the true sticker is the comptroller's office. Um, and I'll give you some examples of uh situations where. Things had to be changed or were denied because of small things. Okay, so. Um, the contracting agency may ask you uh to confirm the locations uh of your programs and services. To T because the the controller will. An example of that is an organization received funding from a council member in Schedule C. Uh, where they were slated to do programming and we're just gonna use a phony example, but public school one, two, three. And your borough, and uh you agreed to do the programming. And you contacted the council member after you went to initiate the programming with the school. The school informed you that uh they already had the same programming and uh they weren't interested for whatever reason. Uh, but you took it upon yourself or took the initiative to identify another school. So you approached the council member and you asked them to change the school, we're now not, we're now gonna do public school eighty nine instead. Okay, uh, the council member's cool, fine with that, um, so you begin your programming at public school eighty nine. And um, at the time of you, you submit your receipts to the agency, the agency will tell you, hey. Uh, according to all the public documents, you know, Schedule C and the master list. Uh, it says that this money is scheduled for public school one, two, three. Now, that's an example of something like that where now the agency will reach out to us in form of the issue. And we will have to then make that change, meaning we have to change the designation publicly to list. Uh, your organization to do programming at public school eighty nine. Uh, as opposed to the one twenty, one, two, three that you originally. Now, that's another example of something that will create or uh a delay or extend the time of the contract. Because now that we have to make this change, it basically gets reverted back to three. The only difference is if it gets reverted back to three for something like that, where we have to make a small change. To make the contract package uh correct. Once it's listed in a reso and that data is exchanged remarks, it usually moves right back to eight. Very fast, because the agency is waiting this and so is the group. And uh, honestly, the agency is um being reviewed and judged on how quickly they get these contracts registered. So believe me, they're gonna want that out the gate as soon as possible as well. Okay, another uh thing that they can be sticked this on are legal names. If your legal name does not one hundred percent match your IRS documentation. Uh, that's another example of something where the agency and or controller will send it back to you to have a change made. Little things such as if on your IRS document, it has your name, comma, Inc. And on your application, you do not have the comma Inc. That comma Inc. must be listed because that um, that is extremely important. And another example of a fine detail that is extremely important to the comptroller's office. Now, once, let's say, the uh agency is like, fine, we got, we did everything we had to do. What they do is they submit that contract package to the controller. They no longer submit it, that one time they did submit it, now they just give the controller access within passport to do it. They'll review it, um, they technically, the comptroller's office technically has thirty days to approve or deny the contract. Uh, they typically take about two weeks. Um, but if for whatever reason, um, is denied. An explanation will be given to the agency and the agency will relay that explanation to uh the organization. But like I said, typical uh reasons why uh it will be sent back to the organization are kind of like the examples I've just mentioned. Where the programming was approved, you know, word of mouth overtly by council member, but we didn't publicly list the change in a. In a stated hearing or um. Or like legal names and things like that, E I N changes, uh, things, things like that. Um, but otherwise, again, unfortunately, I know that's a lot, but unfortunately, we can't give a timeline. All I can explain to you is all the different factors that go or are involved in each one of these steps. And how different factors can affect an uh, an award or contract and send it back. So again, most, most, most important part is one, that the organization gets all their clearance information. Uh, resolved right out the gate or before you designated funds. Alright, with that being said, I'm done with this part, now we can, I'm sure there are a ton of questions. So we can jump to that.
We could do a few hands first, I've also was kind of writing down some of the questions from the chat, just so we can make it organized.
Alright, we have Brett Scudder.
Afternoon, thank you so much for this. Um, so I'm the president of Suicide Council, the New York Suicide Council. Where we provide a lot of trainings to different organizations, schools, CBOs. Um, around suicidality, which could include a whole bunch of things that call for them to be suicidal. I'm looking at this right now and I'm trying to figure out, since we really cover the city and our trainings are for any school, any, any CBO. Anywhere across the city. How do we benefit effectively from what we do providing these training and resources across the city? How do we reach out to the council members to get funding for suicide prevention? As, you know, one of our specialties that we see such a need for in the city.
So how you would do that or my recommendation on that is uh when you submit the application, uh, select the members. Um, if you have specific plans or proposals to provide a specific program in a school or location within their district. That's always a start, uh, but if you have uh almost like a scheduled program that you can provide at any school or any location. Um, that's how I would suggest you pitch it, uh, but that's gonna be uh important on your end, that you do the legwork and meet with the council members. Because whenever an organization submits uh what I call a blanket application, where they submit one application. Uh, kind of for uh. One type of programming and they select a whole bunch of council members, then they uh in turn should do the legwork and explain. You know, their requests or how they can, because one thing that everyone needs to be aware on here is. Council members have an extremely limited amount of funding for their district and finance division myself. And uh, Macees, I mean, I can't explain it safe from Macees, but I know that on the expense side that we coach. The council members to try and keep as much funding within their council district as possible because they are limited. We have a hundred and forty citywide initiatives that will handle, you know, bigger needs across your borough or across your district. And we do have um, you know, mental health initiatives surrounding, uh, I believe, um, suicide and whatnot. So that's also something else that you should select on your application. Um, if you feel, if we have some of those initiatives, we should select it and show and express an interest. Again, if you don't currently receive um, citywide initiative funding. Uh, you will need a council member or caucus or delegation support to kind of break in. Uh, so just a heads up on that, in addition to applying for it to truly be considered. Uh, you'll need a council member, someone to uh champion that request. Hopefully that answered your question, but.
And and on capital, um, so most cast smart company actually goes to city projects and a relatively small portion goes to non-city projects. Because there are so few CBOs eligible every year. And because the CBOs that receive capital tend to be more borough based, um, it's a little less restricted to each district, right? The groups that are receiving funding to renovate a large communities, for example, tends to have impact across multiple districts. So there's a little less um, rig- rigidity as far as councilors funding nonprofits only in their district specifically.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, the next person is Wilma Alonso, if you're ready for another hands raised.
Okay, thank you very much, um, my question is, um. The first one is in reference to the Mox training, the certification.
Yes.
In the past, it was good for three years, is that still the case?
Oh, yes, let me clarify that, uh, for the three years of what she's referring to, uh, so the if. So the three-year deal is for the actual person who takes the uh training. So if you took the training on behalf of your organization, uh, the training is good for three years for you. If you were to leave, let's say, your organization tomorrow and go to another organization, that training uh goes with you to the new organization. So if you were the only person in your organization, cause I think when you take the training, if it's just you or multiple people in your um. Organization that took the training, I believe they have to uh guess list all those details uh for the certificate. And then that's paired with your organization, so at any point in time, I believe you or your organization is required to do an annual like update. Uh, within passports, so if they show like, you know, Wilma has left, uh, and Wilma was the only one who took the training. Um, then that would be triggered, it'll trigger this requirement for the organization again. So yes, uh, if you take it, it is good for you. Uh, regardless of if you stay at your organization and you go to another, but they are good for three years.
Okay, so it's, it's good for three year and, and if, if, I think that the, the trigger will be the submission of the fun, funding application. If it's not under my name, somebody else needs to get the certification done, right?
Uh, I think multiple people from your organization can submit. And as long as they, they say they're from your organization, that's how it gets paired up. Not necessarily who applied to the city council.
And then uh my last question, I know that it was not kind of addressed from the chat. But it's more relevant to the subcontractor and consultant thirty percent rule.
Oh, thank you, that, that's very important, I'm glad you brought that up, so.
I just, I'm, I'm, I'm very familiar with it, but I think that is important. I just, I wa- I was hoping that some of our representative from council district fifteen and fourteen in Bronx. Could be in the, in the webinar too, because it's a re- with a really, a, a, a lot of pressure on the organizations. But only you can spend thirty percent of the allocation towards subcontracting uh services and programming, so.
I'm, I wanna explain that and I wanna explain why that is, okay? So a couple of years ago, we had uh a big issue, a very large issue where council members were funding organizations. And those organizations were then taking those funds and redistributing them to either smaller organizations. Or they were paying for-profit organizations to provide the programs and services. So the general council was up in arms over that and I agree. And um, what they decided was thirty percent, no more than thirty percent can be used for this. And what that has done is that prevented uh any organizations from repurposing or re-granting city council funding. Cause I have to remind you that city council funding is taxpayer dollars. That's why we have to be very transparent on who we're giving it to. And, and if we're making changes to it, we have to do that unfortunately. So what this comes down to or what is deemed subcontracting is at any point in time. Let's say your organization receives funding from the city council, at any point in time. You spend any of that money and pay another organization or another individual outside of your organization. That's considered subcontracting, whether um, it's an actual consultant or it was just someone who was going to assist. Uh, for the day, whatever the case may be, uh, anytime your organization pays another individual or another organization. It's considered subcontracting, even if they themselves or the other organization is a nonprofit. Now, the other issue or why this was created is uh the general council feels that. If the city council is funding you, meaning your organization to provide a program or service. And you are then taking those funds to pay someone else to do that, then they feel why are we funding you?
No, I, 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 I understand, I think that the council.
No, no, I'm not directing that to you personally, Wilma, I'm directing that to all organizations on this call. You know, I'm just saying that's, I wanna explain on the reasoning behind that. Um, and I understand that it may be difficult, and then another factor is that uh we started to find out that there were. I guess, you know, agreements made behind the scenes. Uh, where larger organizations promised smaller organizations or, or smaller organizations worked out. Uh, deals or secured funding from the city council by using a larger organization's name, E I N. Uh, again, that has happened too, and we've seen this before, but how that backfires typically is at the end. Uh, meaning when they submit their receipts. When the larger organization who probably already gave a substantial amount of the funds to the smaller group to begin on provide their programs. When they go to submit their receipts and, and documents to the agency, the agency will see that uh, that this. You know, some of money was given to another group and will earmark it and may not approve it to move forward. Or they will, they typically flag it and send it to our general council's office who's pretty strict on that thirty percent. Okay, so that's just.
I, I appreciate it, I was just.
Yeah, no, but I really appreciate you saying that because we typically have, uh, you know, a lot of people and then I do hear, um. You know, I know that council members want to help out the small grassroots organizations and I want to help them too. Um, and I also know that they provide great work and I don't wanna take anything away from them. It's just unfortunate right now, the way our budget is set up, we can't get funds to them unless they, you know, are. You know, have all these eligibility requirements in order. So that's one thing, if we want to help one of these smaller groups, the best way to help them. Again, like council member, Riley mentioned earlier, is to educate them, we have to educate them on what they need in order to get, get funded. And then once they go through this process once, and, and like I said, execute a successful contract, then it's good. Now, not only that, once they execute a successful contract with us, believe me, all these private foundations and grants. Uh, are aware of all the hoops per se that we're asking these organizations to jump through in order to successfully complete a contract. So once you successfully go through this, you can then use these contracts to uh, you know, try and get other contracts. And let me tell you, organizations and big foundations feel way more comfortable, way more comfortable giving you funding. If they know you've already, you know, executed a city contract, because that just shows your uh capabilities administratively. And, and record keeping wise, you know, to handle that, you know, they may give you a small grant and, and not ask questions, but some. When it comes to larger sums of money, you're gonna want some, you know, detailed accountability of it, and that's all. By completing a contract, whether it be for the first time, uh, that kind of proves that.
And I think that the council did the right thing, you know, it's like limiting, trying to avoid those kind of situations, unfortunate situation. I was just related more into, uh, like for example, it's more organization that have a small staff. And they will like to conduct an event and they need to, um. Uh, get equipment to be rented for an event.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's like, if, if, if that's what you do, you know, it's like, and, and that is considered subcontracting. You know, it's kind of put the burn also, I just wanted to, to, to frame it in that way. I understand that outsourced, outsourcing all the services do not make sense either, you know, so. This is capacity building, right, it's like, that's what we want.
Yeah, but with the example you just gave us, we're gonna ask you to be a little more savvy on your end. Yeah, but with the example you just gave us, we're gonna ask you to be a little more savvy on your end. To use our funds, you know, for operating expenses and things of that nature and then you can use your private money to do all those payments to rent. Equipment and things of that nature, if you think about it. Probably already earmarked specific, you know, costs associated with these things. Now, uh if that, and you were paying for that elsewhere, you will use our funding for that and you use the funding that you originally earmarked for the equipment. So that's all uh it comes down to, you just gotta get a little savvy on your end.
Never thought about that, James, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to have a question to chat, I know Kate's um gonna follow up after the call with contacts for each office. And if someone else also asked about the supplemental forms, I think she's gonna try and figure out which offices have one or not.
Yeah, hi everyone, I do wanna chime in, so uh I know this question has been asked a lot. We will follow up with a presentation, I'm going to try and figure out how to send you this recording since it is a very large file, so that might be a YouTube link or something like that. Um please be patient while we get it out to you all, I will also include contact information and information about offices. That have supplemental forms. Um and ways to ask additional questions. Um we are at the uh limit of our time, we have the schedule until five thirty. And I want to be very conscientious of our amazing finance representatives, Macees and James. Who are here after hours to help us um make sure that our Bronx organizations. Are getting this information and getting their questions answered, so if you've not had your questions answered yet. Um please be on the lookout for that follow-up email and you will have. The contact information for both the district offices to which you are applying as well as the discretionary at council. Uh dot NYC dot gov email address for um. Questions you think are more fitting for our lovely finance guys. All right, and so I think we are logging off, thank you for everyone who joined. And everyone, I know that you are muted, but I just wanna say thank you again to Macees and James. Um it was wonderful to have you on here to answer all of the questions. Uh we appreciate you talking for hours to help our Bronx organizations.
No problem, definitely follow us the uh follow-up questions and.
Yeah, we, we monitored the discretionary email all day long, answering CBO questions.
There you go, you heard it from the source, if you have questions and you send it to that email address, they do not go into a black hole. They are answered by the lovely gentleman you see on this call.
That was correct, and if you have multiple questions, if you could, for, for our sake, could you uh send them all in one email as opposed to.
Please.
That is extremely. All right, thank you guys, enjoy the rest of your day and your rest tonight.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.